I am the Chair of the Board. This is being held in person, but it's also available for viewing and go-to meeting.
Meeting.
Members of the public with any interest in providing testimony regarding any item on the agenda should plan for in-person attendance. Mass General Law requires that anybody who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair. I see nobody noticing that. So it's now 6:31 and I am opening the meeting and inviting everybody to stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So this evening we start with public meeting on case number PB 2025-02. Eastward MBTLLC trustee of Eastward Homes Business Trust Agent Susan Ledoux has requested a release of covenant for number 1594 to 98 Orleans Road lots 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, and 8, Ledoux's Landing, Assessor's Map 107, parcel S2-1 and S2-2, and the Residential Rural RR and DEP Zone 2 Water Resource Protection District. The original case was PB 2024-21. Good evening, Susan. How are you? You're well-accompanied.
Actually, Mr. Chair, we should have made a correction. There was a last-minute change. The applicant has asked to only release Lot 8.
Lot 8, okay. I thought we were going to get into that.
And all of the other lots will be retained in the existing covenant.
Right. Okay. I figured we were going to get that because I've got something ready to sign to that effect.
Yes. Good evening, Bill Riley, on behalf of Eastward Companies, accompanied by Eastward Companies. So what happened was Christine, as she always does, checked with Town Council and found out that the practice we've been following for the last 50 years or so was not approved by Town Council. The statute clearly calls for retaining all the lots until the road is built. Of course, our history has been substantially different from that. And what we'd like to do is, I think you have the authority here to compromise. So instead of retaining 100% of the lots, we have one lot, actually, we have two that have frontage on Route 39, Orleans Road. And what we'd like to do is have that lot released. We cannot get a billing permit on a lot unless it's released from the road covenant. Then the goal would be to sell the lot and then use the proceeds, at least part of the proceeds, to pay for the balance of the road. So that's sort of our business model. It's the way we've been doing business for a long time. And we hope you'll agree with that as being a reasonable compromise between retaining 100% of the lots and just releasing one.
Okay. Christine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Enclosed in your packet is the updated request from Eastward Companies from Sue Ledoux. They did provide assessor real estate comparisons as well as cost estimates for the road layout and the existing amount of work that needs to be completed. And VHP did do an evaluation of that, and they did concur with the cost estimates that were submitted by the applicant. In writing the covenant release, Town Council had recommended tightening up some of our procedures in accordance with Mass General Law and to ensure just the financial security to protect the interests of the town when we do these, when we get requests for covenant or partial releases of the covenant. So going forward, I think we can work on that. But for this time, we'll allow the, as a compromise, instead of releasing six lots, we will release one lot. And going forward, we'll work with the applicant to ensure that there is a financial security as part of our condition going forward.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Mary? Anything? Nothing?
Nope.
Since there's no discussion, any comments from the public? I would entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing is closed. I'd like to entertain a motion then with regard to the adjusted request for a release, Lot Number 8.
So I'm going with the planning board going to release Lot 8, partial release of covenant for the requested first time.
Have a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Nice to see you.
It's about time he named something after Suzer that does all the work.
Yeah, that's right. Well, we'll see that.
Guess which bill is higher?
There you go. So the second public meeting this evening is the potential A&R Plan for Discussion with Dan Croto, private engineer for Moran. It's a lot line change of Number 5 Brooks Road and Number 7 Doones Road. We have a presidential board. Great.
The representation, or the plan or the preliminary plan. Good evening, Dan Croto from Moran Engineering. And I may have to use that plan, but I forgot my own copy. So this is the Number 5 Brooks Road and Number 7 Doones Road are the same, they've been the same family for a long time. And now it's being, the ownership's been transferred to the next generation. And the next generation would like to sell Number 7 but keep Number 5. And having been in the same family that when you're driving up to Number 7, it looks like you're at Number 5. They had done the A&R to create Number 7 way back in 1977. Was just drawn to save the existing buildings and came up with a convoluted, might be hard to see, but it'd be the dash lines and that, convoluted lot line that went around the existing garage and house.
Yep.
So the way it is when you pull up to 7, it's very hard to sell. So what they would like to do is straighten part of the lot line and then they're going to add plantings. And we talked to conservation already about the plantings. And as long as they use the correct species, then that will be fine. But it'll give privacy to both houses. So the change in the lot line will, it won't alter the areas, it won't alter the frontage, it's just straightening out the line between the two. So I had a preliminary meeting with Christine and Rachel from zoning. And Rachel had brought up the concern of, on this plan, I believe, or maybe it was the previous plan, it was originally garage to be moved. And she wasn't, she wouldn't have recommended endorsement with that on it. So the owners are looking at either removing or moving the garage, probably moving the garage at this point. It isn't much of a structure, so as long as they know it's going to survive the 10-foot or 15-foot move, then they'd like to go that route. And I just wanted to come to the planning board beforehand and make sure that the board didn't see concern with endorsing this type of plan before. I'd recommend to them to go through the expense of moving a building. So it's, I think it's, it seems like a very simple, you know, change in lot line. And to the different surveyors I've talked to, including the last town surveyor, they all saw it as no issue. So it's not changing the frontage. There'll be no change to the lot size or the buildable upland size. And then with the moving of the garage, there will be no change to the, you know, there'll be no impact on any of the zoning setbacks. I was hoping there was a way to get endorsement before the moving of the garage, but it doesn't seem like that's really a method that can, or a way we could go.
Okay.
So I just wanted hopefully to get people's, you know, preliminary review of it and just make sure there was no concerns before I recommend it.
Yes, as Dan indicated, you know, it meets the A&R criteria to move the property line. Rachel did identify that, or recommended that the garage be moving to make the lot more conforming, you know, in terms of the setbacks. And Dan just wanted to get a poll of the board if they do suggest moving the garage that there'd be enough support for the, to endorse the A&R after they move the garage first. So I would recommend, we did recommend just coming to get a sense of the board, but we would also, I didn't see any other issues with moving the property line. So I would still recommend endorsing the A&R when it comes back to us.
So it looks to me very quickly that, given the difference between the green and the red on the handout that we have, the amended lot lines, that it looks like it's probably a wash in terms of the net coverage area. You lose a couple here, a couple hundred feet here, you gain a couple hundred feet there. Is it basically the same?
It's, yeah, it's made to be the same, yep.
Looks like two triangles.
Equal transfer from one to the other.
Right. Smaller triangle with a larger kind of parallelogram and then a bigger triangle with...
And it makes a lot more sense, the line, the proposed line makes a lot more sense than the, like I said, convoluted line to go around the buildings. It's just when they originally did it, they didn't want to move the existing buildings and it was all one family, so they went the easiest route.
Looks pretty straightforward to me. Any other questions for the applicant or for the town?
Just my question is, Rachel's problem with it was that the new lot line put the garage too close to the property line.
Correct. And I originally had a note, yeah, that was it.
So how close does the garage get with the lot line?
Looks pretty.
I mean, living in...
It's...
10 feet? It looks like 10?
Yeah, maybe it was 10.
It's about 10. Pretty close.
Even closer. It's in the round eight feet, probably.
Eight feet.
And what does that, is that something you cannot get endorsed as zoning board without having to move the garage?
No, we could go, well, not sure. We didn't want to create a non-conforming situation for either lots because...
Do you create a non-conform with the driveway? The driveway's on this here, right?
Driveway's going to be, the driveway, there's a driveway on Brooks for Number 5. There is a driveway for 7.
Right.
So the idea will be to remove that pavement and that whole area is going to be planted.
Gotcha.
And we're creating a nice buffer between the two houses.
And then put a new driveway in on 7?
7 has a driveway coming from Doones. So they both have their own driveways. They almost connect, but they don't quite connect.
Gotcha.
So you're coming from the north down to the south.
Yeah, that was just my question. That one line, that red line doesn't make it too close, the driveway too close to where you have to create the necessary?
The driveway, so the let, let's see where, where am I? So here's, so for Number 7, you're coming from Doones, you're coming here. Part of the parking on 7 is now over the lot line.
Gotcha.
This will all be removed.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
And so this will be removed, this will all be planted to make a buffer between the two. Right now, in reality, people are parking at 7 to go to 5 because it is all one family. And I do have, the plan that I'm looking at, I forgot to bring that one, is the one that's going to conservation and it shows it all is planting along that line. Remove that paper.
5 was recently redone, I think it's called, coming before historic.
Yes, that one's, that's why part of the family wants to keep that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fairly recently. 5 was redone. In the same footprint, it was on the 77 plan. The garage was just refaced.
Proceed the direction that we, that we both A&R now or that we just kind of do an informal poll and...
Do an informal poll, please. The A&R hasn't been officially filed yet.
Okay. I mean, I have the same problem with it. It's unfortunate that you can't do it without moving the garage and just aggravating it.
But it sounds, but no, it's good, but I appreciate everybody taking the time to review it because I didn't want the, to be missing something, you know? So look at all the angles before having to move it. Everybody's fine with it?
I think so. Yeah. Can't imagine you'll have difficulty here.
What's that?
I can't imagine you'll have any difficulty here.
No, it seems simple enough.
Yep.
It was just before moving the building, I would, again, I just wanted to check with everybody. So I much appreciate it. Thank you for review.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Christine.
Thanks, Dan.
We move on now to Section 4 of the, for approval of the planning board minutes. I don't know if you've, if everybody's had a chance to look at them. They look absolutely fine to me, a little more ample than usual for a month ago. This is February 11th, I believe.
We approved the minutes from February 11th, told by Mike.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any corrections? I didn't see anything. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now it's the Christine Flynn Show.
All right, well, yes. In your packet.
Before I do that, Kim, may I hand this to everybody? We'll put this down downstream to sign off on the partial release that we did, we voted on, so we'll just get that going, so...
Great. In your packet are recommended zoning changes for the accessory dwelling unit by law to be consistent with the new state legislation that was adopted last year. And so Town Council had made some recommendations on what needed to be revised. So we will need to do a public hearing, which we will schedule and advertise for April 8th at 6:30 PM. And then on March 25th, we do have four public hearings. And I do want to spend maybe a half hour or an hour to do a presentation and an overview of some of the changes and just some of the implication for your, for information purposes. And if anyone also, if we have any questions from members of the public, we'll do the presentation on March 25th and then a public hearing on April 8th. Thank you. And so we have, we already have allow accessory dwelling units as of right since 2023 up to 1,000 square feet. And this ADU bylaw affords homeowners to create an ADU up to half of their gross floor area or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, is the language that's in the state legislation. So I think for some applicants, it might make it a little bit more onerous in terms of the size of the ADU that they'd like to have. Some communities are also considering other, a second ADU bylaw up to, you know, say 1,000 square feet, but allowed by special permit. And that would have to go through a whole regulatory process. So that could be a second option if that's something the board would like to consider. We can also add more language to that effect.
So a quick question. When we went through this process before and the preferred dimensions were 900, is there any, will we during the hearing process have an argument made for that? Do you think that, so it might be something we would follow up on as an adjustment later on? Or should we just like skip it out, do you think, for this cycle and just get the alignment with the state law done?
So the alignment with the state law is something we have to do and in terms of 900. But we can also allow for a second ADU bylaw up to 1,000 square feet as another option for homeowners. But for the protected ADU language that is now part of Chapter 48, as a protected use, the language has been spelled out for 900 square feet. And I do recognize that, you know, we will, one of the, there have been, since 2023, there have been 18 ADUs that have been permitted by the Building Department. And I'm looking at data to quantify what the size of those accessory dwelling units have been, just to see what the trends have been in terms of size.
Is council saying we can't have 1,000 as a matter of right?
They, you know, it's a question that they have changed to 900 square feet. So we can't, and it's one of those situations that I've asked, is this making it more restrictive or less restrictive? And we can't make it more prohibitive. We have to make it easier for the public to utilize this amendment. So it's a little, yeah.
Because our bylaw is less restrictive, allows up to 1,000 square feet as a matter of right. The only part that's restrictive about our bylaw that the state doesn't allow is we can't mandate ownership, right? We can't mandate...
Duration of...
Duration of the rent.
Of occupation or whatever.
So to me, it would be easier to just remove the residency requirement.
The residency requirement will be restricted, will be stricken. That was part of council's recommendation to comply with state regulation.
I guess I don't understand why they're saying that we would have to do a second separate provision to allow that.
They're not, they're not. I am suggesting that other towns have done that as a workaround to allow some flexibility because they use the language of gross floor area and that is a little more restrictive in terms of size. And since we have already allowed up to 1,000 square feet for accessory dwelling units, some homeowners may want to go through the special permit process and have that extra space.
Which we already allow. That's where I'm getting tripped up.
So we're going to be changing that. So in the draft bylaw that I've just handed out, that will change.
And I just don't understand why. Like that's where my, that's where my concern is.
It's already, it's already done.
Why are we changing it to be more restrictive?
I understand.
Like why can't we just...
It sounds like legalese.
We can be more restrictive, we can be less restrictive.
Correct.
So to me, the only change...
We're already less restrictive.
Right. So the only change that I, I guess I'm struggling with council's opinion that we would have to...
Go back to 900.
We would have to go down in size because we weren't 900 square feet. We were at, we were a special permit. We specifically, when Cape Cod Commission came and said, make it as a matter of right, and housing advocates said, make it as a matter of right, we not only made it as a matter of right, we made it as a matter of right, we removed the restrictions on lot size, and we went up to 1,000 square feet without the 900 or half your square footage, whichever is lesser. So to me, we are less restrictive, and I don't understand that. That's where I'm having a hard time.
I agree.
Neither at 1,000, yeah.
I don't understand why we can't.
The Venn diagram means that we're more, we're the larger circle.
We're allowing, we're allowing more with exception of, yeah, I understand that some of our restrictions...
They're gone, yeah.
That have to do with a kind of a, the seasonal nature of the market.
Forgive me, I don't remember, is there, is there a term limit on the leasing on the, on the...
I thought it was on the occupancy of the owner. It was six months, right?
Yes.
Which we're already, which we were at, so that would be gone too.
No, I don't think the six months is gone. I think that's still part of it. It's the owner occupancy requirement. We can't restrict that.
So it's the six-month stays...
Yes.
To try to get around that whole thing about a short-term rental. Is that correct?
Yes. The intent is to create year-round housing opportunities.
I totally respect. I guess my question would be of counsel, why can't we just strike the pieces that we need to strike and leave the size limitation that we have if that's okay?
That's a question I can follow up with council on. I know other communities have just opted to do the special permit option as, as another option for homeowners, so...
To me, special permit makes it even more restrictive.
Oh, right.
It's a barrier. It's another barrier.
And that was, the argument was made to us was that, you know...
Correct.
You can commit an extra level of permitting we shouldn't have to do. I guess that would, I guess my question would either be for council or for the Attorney General's office to say, you know, hypothetically, would you see us able to just strike the ownership provisions?
Right. Why would we change something that's already, right, doing what, exactly what this town wants to do?
I'm saying somebody with a smaller, somebody with a smaller home, you know, 1,500 square feet.
Right.
They can't go more than...
750.
Right.
Right.
Or 900, whichever is lesser.
Right.
It's tough to fit a, you know, 750 square feet's a studio.
Right.
You know, most places. So I just...
It's an issue, I can follow up, I can follow up with what other communities are doing and what Town Council has.
Spend a lot of time on this one.
We were so intentional making those changes.
Right.
I mean, we had a bylaw that was working well. Cape Cod Commission came out with their model bylaw. We said as a planning board, and I think Alan was on the board with me at the time, we said, no, we want to keep it as a special permit. Then they came back the next year and they said, no, we don't want you to keep this as a special permit. So we made the changes and we went to as a matter of right. And then nobody was coming in because of the restrictions that we put in on the lot sizes. So in a, in form, you have to have like 15,000 square feet. And, you know, otherwise you have to have 40,000 square. And builders and contractors and engineers came in and said, it's prohibitive, people can't come and get an application because of it. So we went to a matter of right and we increased it to 1,000 and we removed the special permit requirement. So it just feels like...
We're taking a step back.
We're going backwards when we should be going forward.
It's going to be more restrictive.
When we have a major housing issue that...
That we're dealing with.
I think some of the changes, you know, allowing it as a matter of right anywhere, I think, helps. But some of those changes were where we've gone so far beyond it already.
Correct. Oh, no. I think Harwich, I give Harwich a lot of credit, has been ahead of the game in terms of zoning for their accessory dwelling units. So I'm not arguing with you in any way. I tend to agree with you.
No, and if we've had 18 applications and it went in, that means we're doing something right.
Well, can we also find out how many got built?
Since 2023, so that's a year and a half, basically.
Can we, can we... We have 18 since 2023?
That's my understanding.
I thought you said 2,000, right? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. So exactly, so we're doing it right. Why not with success?
But to that point, can we find out how many got built?
Okay. Sure.
Because that's the other part. We wanted to make sure we, all the way through.
I'd be curious too about the sizes.
On the sizes, yeah, that would be a good addition.
Like, is there like a cookie cutter, almost like an MSBA for the schools? Like, is there a cookie cutter ADU that contractors are using?
That works, yeah.
Right. There might be a hidden formula that doesn't appear.
I mean, it's, it's still like...
It's expensive.
It's expensive.
The state put aside money for this too, though. The state put aside money for this too, though, for the, for ADU.
Waystack was saying it's almost 450,000 per unit to do, to fit one out.
I, I can believe it. The average three-bedroom home is costing, there's a building that's bidding a million dollars for your, a three-bedroom, two-bedroom home right now. So I get it. But, and that's why the smaller, you know, even a smaller unit is only going to hamper it.
Right.
But again, we had provisions in those, in those early bylaws that was, you had to still look like a single-family house. You couldn't tell that it was two units at the same time. You had to do all of those things that, that, you know.
That's still G there.
And I think those, those provisions are also still in here.
Yeah, G is still here.
So they're not being removed. And the intention is still not to have, be impactful in terms of neighborhood character, also in terms of traffic, you know, because you still have to provide a parking space and so the, so the, so the sensitivity to the neighborhood is, those restrictions are still, remain.
I think though, just to summarize, the board wants to make sure more of these get built and to eliminate any barriers if we can. Is that kind of correct?
I would think the state would want to look at what we're doing, right?
Now, they don't though.
All right.
Okay. So I will follow, so we'll have more information on March 25th and I will, you know, and also in preparation for our public hearing, we'll have that opportunity to go, to refine the language a little bit more in terms of what the board would, in terms of how, the consensus of the board and how they want to move forward.
It'd also be worth the phone calls in the news blog in addition to council, just because they're going to be the ones that are going to review it at the end of the day. So, you know, I know they don't like to review things sympathetically, but it would be good to know if, you know, if they're willing to say, you know, this is what we're thinking of.
Okay. The attorney general, attorney general's office has also offered to review these ADU bylaws as well, so I can make some phone calls in addition to that. Yeah. Okay.
All right. So let's mention the West Harwich DCPC with the Cape Cod Commission.
Yes, I am reaching out to the Cape Cod Commission and so hopefully we can do a, just an overview of some of the guidelines for development in the West Harwich DCPC at our, at some of our upcoming planning meetings that we would like to, as part of a discussion, so. But I do think the question has been raised by some butters in terms of what the process is at the local level and, you know, considering that this was a district of critical planning concern by the Cape Cod Commission, do they play, do they, what role, if any, do they play in this? So I'm reaching out to their historic resources planner just to go over some of the criteria, the history of the district, and then also going forward, what are the guidelines that the town has or has not adopted at this time? And just for information purposes, if developers, if there are opportunities for development, what's, what's the purpose and intent of those guidelines and how do we want to, how do we want them, how do we see them being implemented by applicants?
Very good. I had a talk with Sarah too about, about the matter, about the language. And just as a matter of course, she said she'd be delighted to offer, since we're probably going to see some action along there invariably, just because of the state of some of the buildings, we're going to see some applications. She said she'd be happy to, to offer an opinion, like a stated opinion, written opinion. And I think we'd be wise to avail ourselves of that, so.
Absolutely. And I will, you know, I'll do an extended schedule for some of these topic items to reserve time that if we do have projects and then to balance, you know, at least our second meeting to, to have some greater discussion relative to planning initiatives.
I'd also, just as a, you know, laying it out there, I do not participate, I don't see what goes on like Harwich old timers on Facebook, but I understand there's been a lot of discussion about it. And so I got a, saw a couple of screen grabs and it's like, from what I can tell, there's a lot of discussion about things that are completely vaporware. There's no discussion hard set about any application anywhere and people are getting sud-stuck about this. So I think when the time comes, we're going to have to just cut it right through. It's, it's not that difficult. The language is pretty straightforward. So, I mean, it'll let the chips fall where they may, but I just, it's kind of surprising. Okay. So next we have the DRI hearing update, yeah.
So the Cape Cod Commission has had their third public hearing. They're having another one this Friday at noon, if anyone wants to observe. I've submitted two sets of comments to the commission and just identifying some, some more factual information and some additional information from town, from other town departments as well. And so they're up on the commission website and they are moving forward with, I believe the full commission review either starts Friday or the following week, but they are under deadline to move forward to get, to have the subcommittee make a recommendation to the full commission. And then the full commission has a public hearing process and then they make a decision regarding the project. So I will keep you posted, but their next meeting is at noon on this Friday. And lastly, the Citizen Planner Training Collaboratives 30th Annual Conference is this Saturday. I don't know if anyone has signed up for that, but I just wanted to throw that out there again as a resource. And if you're not able to attend, they, they are really good about posting a lot of the sessions online. And I think, you know, maybe come the fall, it wouldn't be bad to have them come to Harwich or to sponsor a workshop with some of the, our neighboring towns as well.
That'd be great.
That's a great idea.
And, and lastly, Ann did ask that I add our zoning discussion that we had with the chair of the zoning board of appeals as part of a broader discussion and to keep it on our agenda. So I will do that just to keep us on, just to keep us going and, and to set aside some time for discussion purposes.
And with the caveat that at some point this is going to require money or for something that we get it organized, because that would have to go through capital outlay, it'd probably be more than $50,000 kind of thing. So we talked about, you know, if we refresh, we did review the bylaws with the zoning, it's going to cost money, right? So where does that come from?
It may not go through capital outlay, but we want to make sure that we're, we're keeping.
Over 50? It would be a capital outlay or something like that.
Is it over 50?
I would hope not.
I don't know. We'll find out, but.
We just spent 250,000 on the.
I think that was a two-year process, that's a two-year process with a, with a 10-year plan.
This could be a two-year process as well. So there's, there was a willingness to look at these and is it going to need money to look at them?
So I think it needs a clean look-through.
Yeah.
Having done so many bylaws, I hope that we would be under a brand, under a brand.
I'm not speculating.
And I hear, I thought it was crazy to spend $600,000 to paint the library, whatever it was 15 years ago. And now what is it going to be twice that next time around?
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And for the, I'll also provide an update relative to the local comprehensive plan. In addition, we did last night, the select board did endorse the housing production plan, so we will submit that to the state. And we are moving forward with the two other plans, the hazard mitigation plan and the open space and recreation plan. We're hoping to, to finalize the open space and rec in the next few weeks. So I'll, I'll provide more information on that as we're moving forward.
How'd the vote go from the, the board? Was it unanimous?
Five to zero. It was unanimous, yes.
Wow.
So it was impressive. They, they did have a lot of engagement, which was good, actually. They had a fair amount of comments, so we did some revisions to include, you know, I think to speak to issues relative to the, to what the town has done and what the town has accomplished with little to no resources and move, going forward, you know, that, that we do want to consider scattered site development. We do want to recognize that, you know, state funding isn't a one-size-fits-all and we really want to address, you know, our infrastructure issues relative to the roadways as well as our natural resources and, you know, the limitations of sewer and, of water and sewer. And, you know, just to ensure that we're, we're balancing future growth and development in a very sensitive and thoughtful manner, but also relative to remaining or maintaining our community character as much as we can. And so I think scattered site and infill development were key priorities for that.
Great. So any other business before the board this evening?
Christine, a couple of questions. I didn't see any of these documents posted, the meeting documents. Were they someplace else?
The, the agenda and the covenant packets are posted relative to the covenant release. And this, the proposed A and R was not posted as the, as a discussion item, but the other application for eastward was posted. And that's under our case, under the case number.
Okay. I'm looking at agenda minutes, one-time event, March 11th, 2025, planning board meeting. And there's a tab on the left that says meeting files and it's empty. So I'm just wondering if I'm just not used to where I'm supposed to look.
Okay. So I can.
I mean, I've got it. I don't need it. I'm not.
Why don't we take that offline and see if we, if we can adjourn?
I can show you on the town's website, on the planning board website and where we have the cases that are listed under the planning board page.
That'd be great because I looked, yeah, I was looking. I just figured I might be in the wrong place. Also, I seem to remember after the, the March 4th meeting was canceled, I saw an agenda that had three items on it that were continued to the 11th, and there was only one item tonight. What happened to the, the other two?
They got bumped to the 25th.
They got bumped to the 25th.
Now, where would, would I be able to find that information someplace without having to bring it up here?
I sent it in the email that I sent to the board last week, updating the potential agenda for, for March 25th. So we have four public hearings. We have a special permit for a two-family on Nine Shelley's Path. We have a site plan review for castaways. We have a special permit for a pool in the Six Ponds District. And we have.
I can't believe you can remember those already. We go through these, by the way, we go through these between four and two days before a meeting and come up with the agenda and go through this in Christine's office. And a lot of times what happens is something will get moved because somebody can't attend and they have to reschedule. And so we're just, you know, or, or we don't get a, a council, we don't get town council advice on something, so it has to get pushed through. So it's, a lot of this is fluid until about two days before, you know, the Friday afternoon or, or Monday morning or something. It can still be a little up in the air, so.
And we do try, all of the meetings for those require public hearings, so they have been posted and we do sometimes have to move the scheduling also if the application isn't complete or if information is outstanding, so.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Harry, if you, in any time, always feel free to call and question us if we miss something. We want to, Megan and I are really trying to work on making sure that information on our planning pages is really up to date, but more importantly, user-friendly.
Right.
So, and that can be, that can be a little bit of a challenge.
Well, there was a little bump in the road with the new website, so I think it just took a little while to get used to it navigationally. Any other business for the board? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.